I would like to call the November, November eighth, City Council Regular Meeting to Order. Will everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Republicans stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
Will a clerk please call the roll?
Carrie?
Present.
Chilton?
Present.
Hutchings? Nelson?
Present.
Parker?
Present.
Whackler?
Present.
Cassidy? You have a quorum.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda? Mr. Carey?
The agenda and the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. Are there any changes to the agenda or consent agenda? Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I move to amend the agenda and consent agenda by adding Lay Down Resolution two thousand twenty-three zero six five, a resolution commending Tim Dillon for his years of service to the Kenai Peninsula Economic Development District, the city of Soldatna, and local community.
Are there any objections to adding Resolution twenty-two-three dash zero-six-five to the agenda? Saying none, it is added. Would the clerk please read the consent agenda?
October twenty-five, twenty-twenty-three, regular council meeting minutes. Ordinance twenty-two-three zero-three-five, amending Soldatna Municipal Code two-point-zero-five, City Mayor and Vice Mayor to include a provision for a Vice Mayor pro tempore. Sponsored by the Mayor, public hearing on December thirteenth. Ordinance twenty-two-three zero-three-six, accepting grant funds from the State of Alaska Department of Education and Early Development and increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars in the general fund to attend the biannual Public Library Association Conference, sponsored by the City Manager, public hearing on December thirteenth. Ordinance twenty-two-three zero-three-seven, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by two thousand four hundred fifty-two dollars seventy-one cents in the general fund for a donation received from the Central Peninsula Health Foundation, sponsored by the City Manager, public hearing on December thirteenth. Ordinance twenty-two-three zero-three-eight, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by twelve thousand four hundred twenty dollars in the Parks and Recreation Capital Project Fund for the city's joint participation in the Kenai Peninsula Borough's Safe Streets and Roads for all assistance grants through the United States Department of Transportation, sponsored by the City Manager, public hearing on December thirteenth. Ordinance twenty-two-three zero-three-nine, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by sixty-six thousand nine hundred seventeen dollars in the general fund, seven thousand five hundred ninety dollars in the utility fund, and two thousand one hundred fifty-three dollars in the airport fund for the city's deferred compensation employee benefit program, sponsored by the City Manager, public hearing on December thirteenth. Resolution twenty-two-three zero-six-three, commending the Soldatna High School Football Team as the Division Two State Champions for the year twenty-twenty-three, sponsored by the Mayor and Vice Mayor Parker. Resolution twenty-two-three zero-six-four, requesting the Governor of the State of Alaska designate by proclamation the area of the Upper Cook Inlet Eastside Setnet Fisheries as an area impacted by the economic disaster in twenty-twenty-three and supporting a recovery plan, sponsored by the Mayor and Vice Mayor Parker. Resolution twenty-two-three zero-six-five, commending Tim Dillon for his years of service to the Kenai Peninsula Economic Development District, the city of Soldatna, and local community, sponsored by the Mayor. Action Memorandum twenty-two-three zero-two-eight, approving twenty-twenty-four Boards and Commissions Ex officio appointments, sponsored by the Mayor. Action Memorandum twenty-two-three zero-two-nine, appointing the attorney's firm Chandler Faulkner Munson and Caciola LLP as municipal attorney and authorizing entering into a contract for professional legal services, sponsored by the City Manager. Action Memorandum twenty-two-three zero-three-zero, approving the twenty-twenty-four City Council meeting schedule, sponsored by the City Clerk. That is your consent agenda.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on any items just read by the clerk? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and the phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on any item that the city clerk just read? Please step forward and state your name and address for the record. And you'll have three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, Counsel? My name is Ken Coleman. I'm the Vice President of the Kenai Peninsula Fishermen's Association. I reside at three-five-five-six-five Berenoff Street, approximately mile twelve on Calquanski B-True. I'm here tonight to speak to resolution regarding a set netter disaster twenty-two-three zero-six-four. I, you may recall my shiny head here a few other times asking you for your indulgence and support in a, in an economic disaster declaration and encouraging the Governor to, to pass that through to the Federal Department of Commerce. Once again, it's been a disastrous year for us, and in this case, it was the ultimate disaster in that we didn't get to fish at all. We were, we were noticed last March, late March, that there wouldn't be sufficient kings or they didn't think, fishing game didn't think there'd be sufficient kings to prosecute fishery, and of course, that didn't occur. So, given the, this is the fifth in the last six years that we've either had a very truncated season and associated disaster requests. This year was particularly hard, and there's a lot of long faces and, and people wondering how the future is going to, to look for them. We've got a Board of Fisheries hearing next, next spring, or I guess in the spring. The days will be longer. It'll be a little bit warmer, late March or late February into early March. And I'd implore anybody who wants to learn this process and understand why things in the fisheries or how regulations are made. It's a good and contentious process in Anchorage. But once again, it is a very difficult thing to sit in front of you and ask for your help, and I appreciate that you would have already demonstrated that through your consent agenda. And it will be a long time before we see any remuneration in this. Actually, we haven't seen any since this process began in two thousand eighteen, though there is some light at the end of the tunnel. The, the Department of, the Governors, the administrative departments send the, sent the final draft spend plan to Pacific State's Marine Fisheries Commission on September eighth, and they will then send it back to the, to the Federal Administration, to Office of Management and Budget, to see if they, it conforms to the grants that, that, that is, is the actual money. And so, we're hoping that there may be some relief for, albeit small, but something for the very distressed Setnet community. And, and once again, I really thank you for, for taking the time and, and approving this. It's very meaningful to our community.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the council? Thank you very much, and hopefully we'll have better years.
I hope so, too. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on any item that was read by the clerk on the consent agenda? Seeing no one here in the council chambers, I'll take a look at Zoom, and I see no hands raised there. So, having no one else wishing to speak, the approved the agenda consent agenda is back before the council. Are there, are there any council objections to approving the agenda and consent agenda? Saying none, the agenda and consent agenda are approved by unanimous consent. Next, I'm going to read and present a commending resolution twenty-two-three dash zero-six-three. If the best football team in the state would step forward. Yep. Kind of, kind of gave you guys a fair warning right now. Victorious for mangling people's names. So, but I don't pronounce it right. It's just because I can't say it right. So, we'll move on. City of Soldatna Resolution twenty-two-three dash zero-six-three, a resolution commending the Soldatna High School Football Team as the Division Two State Champions for the year twenty-twenty-three. Whereas the Soldatna High School Stars qualified to participate in the championship, and whereas the Division Two State Championship Football Game featured Soldatna versus Lathrum and was held in Anchorage on Saturday, October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three. Whereas, under the direction of coaches Galen Brantley Jr., Cade Anderson, Connor Demo, Michael Decker, Drew Gibbs, Ty Lapoul, Colin Meyer, Tito Torres, Chris Walden, Trent Walden, and Trevor Walden, the Soldatna Stars ended their season with a sixty-four to fourteen victory and an eleven-zero season. And whereas members of the winning team include Owen Buckby, Lee Tacy, Wyatt Williams, Dax Walden, Brian Burr, Trevor Michael, Zach Buckby, Andrew Pye, Zach Kemp, Trenton Onomus, Talen Gavallas, Wakina Wong, Landon Hines, Colin Peck, Luke Miller, Andon Wolverton, Mason Bach, Matt Schilling, Charles Huff, Nick Rackley, Gerhart Medkov, Luke Hillier, Wyatt Fairclough, Ethan Piscoy, Michael Dickinson, Jaden Stewart, Jace O'Regan, Landon Bauer, Jacob Kemp, Liam Peck, Blaze Michael, Tanner Clyde, Marcus Hagdum Dorn, Dalton Armstrong, Elijah Lee, Valentino Reguto, Aiden Stenett, Koda Lapoul, Theo Huff, Nathan Hawkins, Kenai Lapoul, Wayne Gagnon, Carter Hillier, Devon Fielden, Austin Lewis, Alad Tousalo, Henry Williams, Elias Brantley, and Hakko Montoya. And I know I got a few chuckles on some of those names, so sorry about that. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the City Council of the City of Soldatna, Alaska, that the Soldatna City Council commends the Soldatna High School Football Team for their outstanding performance in winning the twenty-twenty-three Division Title II Championship. The resolution shall become effective immediately upon its adoption and adopted this eighth day of November twenty-twenty-three. And I expect you'll probably, some of you at least, will be here next year in twenty-twenty-four for when you get that award. And I know a couple of you from your parents and everything else, and congratulations, and we're very proud of you, and we hope to see you, like I said, back here again next year and many years after. Get over on this side here and do a little bit. Nice watch, still. And where's the coach? I gotta give him this.
Thank you, guys. Congratulations again.
Thank you. Thank you.
Star power.
I don't know why I walked away. I got another one of these.
We had to come and get the next one.
Mr. Dillon?
Might as well take a deep breath because this is a two-page.
Okay, City of Soldatna Resolution twenty-two-three dash zero-six-five, a resolution commanding Tim Dillon for his years of service to the Kenai Peninsula Economic Development District, the city of Soldatna, and local community. Whereas, Tim Dillon began his position as Executive Director of the Kenai Peninsula Economic Development District, KPEDD, on August first, two thousand sixteen. And whereas, Mr. Dillon's leadership rejuvenated and revived the Kenai Peninsula Economic Development District. He assembled a winning team of highly skilled professionals that deliver exceptional effective programming to encourage sustainable, responsible economic development. And whereas, Mr. Dillon is often sought out to assist with small and large, new and existing businesses to evaluate and implement efficiencies, develop business plans, identify capital, and schedule improvements. And whereas, Mr. Dillon participates in and leads economic development programs, forums, conferences, and educational events, and greatly influences and contributes to the quality of life and economic success of our community and region. Whereas, Mr. Dillon and his team created and launched a workforce development website to pair peninsula residents to available jobs and help students with career aspirations. And whereas, Mr. Dillon and his KPEDD team successfully helped and guided Soldatna in its effort to secure a riverfront redevelopment planning grant from the U.S. Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration. And whereas, as co-chair of the Supporters of the Fieldhouse, he advocated, promoted, and supported the construction of the Soldatna Fieldhouse Project. He has organized and facilitated community meetings to inform and educate city voters and uses extensive network to build relationships and trust. And whereas, Mr. Dillon and his KPEDD team played a vital role in the success of Soldatna and Kenai Peninsula businesses to successfully manage and endure the impacts of COVID-nineteen pandemic through their diligent work in local, with local, state, and federal decision-makers and agencies. These efforts included the development of an economic impact survey of local businesses, participation in city efforts to develop programming and grants for businesses and nonprofit organizations, identification of roadblocks, and the facilitation of stalled state and federal assistance programs to support local businesses. His efforts contributed to twenty percent of all Alaska Care Small Business Relief Grants being granted to businesses on the peninsula. And whereas, despite Mr. Dillon's being an Arizona Cardinal fan, we still like him. And whereas, prior to his appointment, Mr. Dillon spent over seven years as a City Manager of Soldovia, in which time he brought over thirty million dollars in federal, state, borough, and private investments to the community. And whereas, Mr. Dillon also worked in sports and entertainment for over twenty-five years, including Alaska's fifty-year celebration, the NCAA basketball tournament, the NCAA Frozen Four, and the Arctic Winter Game. Whereas, the Soldatna City Council Mayor wished to express their gratitude and appreciation to him for those dedicated years of service to the Kenai Peninsula Economic Development District and the city of Soldatna and all who call this community home. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Soldatna that the Soldatna City Council commends Tim Dillon for his years of dedicated service to the Kenai Peninsula Economic Development District and local community, that the Soldatna City Council hereby extends its sincere thanks and appreciation to Tim Dillon for his commitment to the city and community and wishes him good health, success, prosperity, and the future. The resolution shall become effective immediately upon its adoption and adopted this eighth day of November twenty-twenty-three. I'm sure somebody wants to be a teacher. Like I said, it's a two-page. Thank you. Yep, thank you. That was a lot of talking, so we need to get a sip here. Moving on to the next agenda item. Presentation with prior notice, Visitor Center Quarterly Report, and I will introduce Maddie. And I saw Mick Elroy on here, but I saw it was Olson in the, in the report. So, one of those two names is gonna work.
Mayor, Council, thank you for having me today. And yes, I did recently get married at the beginning of October, so that is the new last name to go by will be Olson. So, this time is just really flying by. And so, this is our third quarter report for the Soldatna Visitor Center and Chamber of Commerce. Our third quarter Visitor Center numbers confirmed what we already expected with the bustling summer, and our numbers for visitors were just above twenty-twenty-two. So, we're right on par. It was a very busy summer. This year brought a lot of change and new energy to the Soldatna Chamber and Visitor Center. We have two new faces in the office, Joe Spady, who is our new Communications and Events Manager, and Sierra Vanda High, who is our new Membership and Sales Manager. We're thrilled to have them on our team. We have so much just renewed energy, new ideas, and ways to better serve our membership, community, and visitors. So, I'm really excited for what we have going on. Our focus during third quarter continued to be marketing Soldatna, assisting visitors and bringing in, or bringing people together every week through the power of free live music. We wrapped up our fourteen, excuse me, that's actually thirteen-week summer concert series on August thirtieth, and we saw just under seventeen thousand attendees at that event, which is incredible. Our partnership with the City of Soldatna is essential to making this series possible, so thank you for all of your continued vision and support. During this time, we also partnered with the Kenai Chamber of Commerce for luncheon events and to have exciting collaborations coming up with them in the future. In addition, we held five ribbon-cutting ceremonies welcoming new businesses into our community. So, that was exciting to see. As an organization, it is our honor to collaborate with the city administration and council to forward our goal of economic growth, resilience, and quality of life for Soldatna businesses and residents. Moving on to Visitor Center and marketing, the summer of twenty-twenty-three, like I said, was right on par with last year. We saw just over twenty-three thousand one hundred seventy visitors that utilized our services and facility for photography. This year, we had eighty-five entries into our twenty-twenty-three photo contest and contracted with Martin Media to provide us with two hundred-plus updated professional stock photos of Soldatna and the surrounding area. So, you will see lots of those new images in our twenty-twenty-four Visitor Guide. We began sales of the twenty-twenty-four Soldatna Visitor Guide in August, recently wrapping up with a record number of advertisers. Our Visitor Guide is an important part of our marketing mix that aids in telling Soldatna stories. We were able to fill the twenty-twenty-four Guide with seventy ads that were sold to new and returning advertisers. We have updated articles highlighting local sites and businesses, and we are including impactful photography that we collected over the year. Our social media continues to grow with Visit Soldatna, our Instagram page, and also our Facebook page, and the Soldatna Chamber page has grown as well over the last, or in the third quarter. There's not too much to update on our website. Users of visitssoldatna.com are up in the third quarter compared to last year, and most traffic this quarter was driven by our local events pages. Our web host has worked with our SEO to help visitors find the exact page they're looking for when searching in Google, and we've seen a lot of positive feedback from that. At the bottom of this second page, you can see our visitor numbers twenty-sixteen through twenty-twenty-three. And like I mentioned, we saw twenty-three thousand one hundred seventy-seven visitors this year come through our Visitor Center. Moving on to third quarter events, Music in the Park. I know I talk a lot about it, but it really is such an impactful event. The twenty-twenty-three Levit Amp Soldatna Music Series was once again very successful with one thousand four hundred thirty average weekly attendance over the thirteen weeks. We continue to facilitate unity and inclusivity in the heart of Soldatna, where community members and visitors can unite as they enjoy a variety of musical styles. We presented high-quality musical acts, encouraging audience members to broaden their musical scope from local rock and jazz to an a cappella trio from Anchorage. We provided opportunities to gain appreciation for styles and genres that otherwise may not be accessible in Soldatna. We continue to see cross-cultural and cross-generational interaction, a great indication that moving forward, we will successfully continue to broaden and deepen our social connections while fostering awareness and sensitivity. This was our first year of a three-year Levit Amp Soldatna grant that will provide thirty thousand dollars annually, and that will go through twenty-twenty-five. Over the summer, we directed more energy into providing child-friendly lawn activities that are sponsored by ConocoPhillips each Wednesday before the music starts. So, one of these activities included Take a Kid Fishing Day, where we partnered with CPH, Safe Kids, Alaska Communications, and Trustworthy Hardware to hand out a hundred sets of fishing poles, gear, and a life vest to kids, and that event was an absolute hit. We are also excited to have partnered with Kenai Sea Indian Tribe, who hosted four of our lawn activities this season, including Native Arts Drumming and Native Youth Olympics demonstrations. Our team extends our gratitude to the city and community for this incredible partnership. Coming up, we have our Spark Soldatna Shark Tank Event that will actually be held this Saturday, November eleventh, five-thirty PM at Lone Moose Lodge. So, every year for this scholarship, we give away four thousand dollars to a local entrepreneur. Our four participants this year is our Soldatna Sit and Stay, AK Big Sipper, Stepping Stones Educational Coaching and Tutoring, and Miss Elsie's. Tickets are still on sale for thirty-five dollars if you'd like to attend this event. It's really neat to get our local entrepreneurs together. We have a really diverse group of participants this year, so I'm looking forward to that. Also coming up is the beloved Soldatna Annual Christmas Tree Lighting Event that will be held Saturday, December second, at four-thirty PM at Soldatna Creek Park. This year's event includes a live nativity scene with College Heights Baptist Church. On the main stage, we will, and then we will have caroling with Kenai performers, Victorian carolers. The tree lighting will be at five PM, followed by photos with Santa. Of course, we'll have cookies and stockings for kids as well, and a fireworks show at six-thirty. After that, coming up, we have our annual awards celebration, where we honor outstanding members of our community. This will be held December thirteenth at a luncheon, and nominations are open through November twenty-fourth. So, there are a lot of, a lot of incredible members in our community that deserve to be recognized. If you have anybody in mind, please go ahead and submit your nominations. One, another update here is our Community Scholarship Fair. We're hosting a Community Scholarship Fair in partnership with Kenai Chamber of Commerce and Alaska Department of Labor. It was set to be this Saturday, November eleventh. We have postponed this date and pushed it into January twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four. And that will, same time, be eleven AM to one PM at the Kenai Chamber of Commerce. Moving on, it is the season to buy local, so we will be promoting that for the holiday season. And then below, we have our Visitor Center, Visitor Center expenses. And would you like me to read through those? All right. Very good. Any questions?
Any questions from the council or comments? Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Thank you, Maddie, for the report, and congratulations on, on your marriage.
Thank you.
I understand there was a lot of interest this year in Shark Tank. Do you know about how many applicants there were that applied to make it?
Yes. Yeah, this year, we had fifteen applicants, and of those fifteen, our board we had a grading committee, and they chose four participants out of the fifteen.
Thank you. And I just think that shows great interest in our community and helping the local businesses. So thank you.
Absolutely. I will say it was, it was hard to narrow it down. It was a really good group of applicants this year.
Any other questions or comments from the council? I want to thank you very much and Chamber for all you do for the community and Sodatna and surrounding areas. You do a great job.
Thank you. Thank you guys as well.
The next item on the agenda is Kenai Peninsula Economic Development District Quarterly Report, and no introductions are needed here.
Thank you. I appreciate having the opportunity to visit with you all with our quarterly report. Originally, my replacement Cassidy Cameron was gonna be here with me. But she really got pretty sick yesterday, and we had a presentation last night at the assembly, and up until around three o'clock this afternoon, she was gonna try and come, but her voice was just really, really shot. So whatever that, that new thing that's going through, the, the new flu is, is not any fun at all. So next slide, please. One of the things that Cassidy and I have talked about from day one is how large the Kenai Peninsula Borough is and reminding people that we're not just working on things in Kenai and Sodatna. Whether it be as far up the road as Hope or Nanwalek and Port Graham and some of the broadband stuff we're doing over there right now, Halibut Cove and some of the Mariculture things. It's, it's really a large, large area, and she is committed to continuing to make sure the entire Kenai Peninsula is, is covered. Next page. Now, this is our overview. This is our, our elevator speech that we wrote for our board back a couple of years ago. And bottom line is quality of living. Anything that helps impact quality of living, we want to be involved with, and we want to try and help. Next slide. As you all know, we have a thirty-acre facility, but our goal is not to keep those same people there. We had nine businesses there that we were incubating. We just helped one find the door. They actually purchased their own land right down the road from Wildwood. It's the driving school, and they've built their own driving school. So it's a real success story for us because they started from nothing, just a husband and wife putting together the driving school, and now they have over twenty employees. So we have a little bit of office space. We've got two offices that are available. So if you have anybody that is interested, please give us a call. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, quality of life is our, our big concern. And every five years, we write what's called a Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, and then each year we update it. Depending on what's going on in our community, what problems, you know, whether it be in our community or nationally or internationally. And those five pieces that we're working on right now are technology and communication, workforce and human capital, infrastructure and land use, business, climate and entrepreneurship, and regional partnerships. So what happens is if someone comes to me or calls me and says, Tim, can you help me with X? The first thing I do is I take a look at this and I say, okay, where can I, can I fit that in here? And nine times out of ten, I can find a way to put it in here. If I can't, what I have to do is I start looking to figure out, okay, who can help this person? And making sure that we make that introduction so that whether they're on that, you know, tied into one of those five things or not. If it's something that we can't handle, we make sure that the person doesn't walk out empty-handed. Next slide, please. Community update. First of all, just that you all know, I did meet with all of the city managers last Friday. We do this periodically. We started it back four or five years ago, and it really works out well. We also invited this year, the City of Ketchumack does not have a city manager, but they have a mayor. So we actually invited the mayor because she acts as the city manager. So it was great to have everybody there. A lot of good discussion about different projects and grants and things, opportunities, so that we could figure out where we could help them and where people needed help. I am gonna tell you that one of the things that did come up and had a lot of play was revenue streams. And I think each and every community needs to remember they've got to be looking at revenue streams. What do I mean by that? I think you need to be looking at your budget, and are you using it effectively? Are there, are there things where you're leaving money on the table? For example, a bed tax. Those are the different things that you need to be looking at now because as we continue to move forward, we're hearing and seeing that the state is gonna continue to push things down on local government. So you're gonna have to be able to pick up the tab for a variety of different things. So please, keep in mind the, the, the revenue streams and, you know, looking at your taxes and making sure that you're, you're packaging things in a, in a way that makes sense. One of the other local projects that we're working on besides the, the Field House, which Jeff and I are still over the moon about that, is working on the next phase of the Riverfront Project. And what kind of money is needed for that next phase and, and what exactly do you, do you want to do? So working with John and EDA. Next slide, please. Across the borough, we've got a lot of different things going on. We were informed here a couple of weeks ago by the, we, we had applied for a potential project back two years ago on a title project with Title Energy over in the Nikiski area. And we found out recently that we're one of the finalists, so the Department of Energy is actually coming to visit with us the end of November, which is, is great for us. The Department of Transportation, we're in the process right now of working with them. They would like to see us handle their outreach. As Cassidy has said numerous times, we do not want to be the complaint department. But if there's a way for us to have a seat at the table to help reinforce what our communities want so that things are done with us instead of to us, then we would like to play that role. We have another meeting early December with them. I'm hoping that I can get some things wrapped up before my retirement on that. Other projects, Cooper Landing and trying to help them getting snow grooming equipment. I don't know how many of you visit that area during the, the snow season. If you've seen lately, the infrastructure projects, we were able to get 2.3 million for the new Jackaloff Bay float, which I can tell you, I helped get that float from the state back in 2008, and it really needs to be replaced. So that's pretty awesome. And then a variety of different projects that we've gotten funding through the Denali Commission. And the other project that unfortunately has come up and I'm working on with some of my national contacts is trying to figure out what to do about the loss of Raven. And what can we do about making sure that we continue to have some competition and, and the right people that are flying in and out? So keep aware of that one so that you know that we're, we're working on that. Next slide, please. From the state standpoint, you know, we've got the Mariculture project that we're working on right now. We've got the broadband project. I can tell you, from a broadband standpoint, a lot of people are looking at Starlink, and Starlink is doing a, you know, they, I even have it at my house now. But concerns of redundancy, security, variety of different things, but it's getting better every day. There's no one-size-fits-all in Alaska, no less here on the Kenai Peninsula. We are working with a group that's running fiber from Valdez through to Seward, and then around the, the end of the Peninsula to Nanwalek, Port Graham, Soldovia, and then it will end over in, in Homer. So we've got a lot of those kinds of things that, that we're working on right now. The workforce development, it's a three-legged stool, and I've said this before. To fix workforce development, and I spoke here a week and a half ago up in Anchorage about it, people have to understand it's not just that people don't want to go to work, it's that if you don't have affordable housing, transportation that you can count on, and childcare, it, it doesn't matter. Because if you don't have those three, you're not gonna be able to go to work. So we have to continue to work together on all those, and we've got a variety of projects here on the Kenai Peninsula right now and things that people are looking at to try and fix that. Next slide. This is just a graph for you to be able to see. These are all the different projects that we're working on right now that are based on our SEDs. And whether it's the, you know, the broadband piece or the, the new website that we're gonna develop, that we're in the process of developing, all our regional partnerships, it's, it's all broken out here. So at times, it's a little bit easier for us to understand all the different things that we're doing and kind of the, the web we've put together. Next slide. Since Cassidy's not here, that's Cassidy. And I think that you all are going to really enjoy working with her. I know a lot of you already know her because of her work as. I originally hired her in 2008 to work on a water sewer grant, Kyle, down in Soldovia. And then she came on as our treasurer at the City of Soldovia. And then when I left, they hired somebody and they lasted like eight or nine months, and then they brought Cassidy in. And Cassidy, we hired her away from there around four years ago in order to prepare for me to be able to retire. But I think you're really gonna enjoy Cassidy. Next slide. One of the things that we always do is our Industry Outlook Forum, and it's scheduled to be hosted here in Sodatna at the Sports Complex. But one of the things that we've been kind of playing with the last couple of years is should we be doing it in January? And why were we doing it in January versus a time when maybe it wouldn't be quite so snowy? So we're gonna change it up this year. It's gonna be April 25th, and it's gonna be at the Sports Complex. And we're already working on the list of presentations and things. But thank you so much to Joel and, and his crew over at the Sports Complex, being able to get us scheduled in for that for this, this next year. Next slide. Again, we have, I don't have a clue how to use all these different social media things, but I have staff that understand it and get the word out. Those are all our different social media addresses and things, whether it be LinkedIn or Instagram or YouTube. But Abby Dial, who is on our staff, she's a Sodatna person. Her dad is the pastor of the Church of the Nazarene over here. She's been working for us since she's eighteen. She's a little bit over twenty now, almost twenty-one. She's got her degree finished, and she's actually going. She's working for us, but she's also continuing her schooling, and she was just chosen to be able to study at Oxford come January. So we're very, very excited about that. Last. Thank you very much. Those are the addresses and things and, and phone numbers. My last day in, as the Executive Director, is the 31st of December. I have agreed to keep an office. I'm gonna keep an office in the building. In fact, I'm down the hall now, which is nice. And I'm gonna do a little consulting for some folks. Not a ton, but some of the projects that I really, you know, want to make sure happen. And, you know, I was talking to one of my friends here from, about the, the fish wars. And I actually met with the Borough Mayor today because I think that the Kenai Peninsula Economic Development District should take the lead on trying to get those meetings held down here in Sodatna. You know, people have tried a variety of different ways, and it's always been political. Maybe we take a different approach to it. We take an economic approach, not only what it means to a community to host that, but also be able to pull some of the numbers together because fishing is huge down here. And, you know, we have all different kinds of fishing. So rather than a political body trying to move it forward, maybe a group like ours can, can try and do that. So, but be more than happy to answer any questions about my presentation tonight. And thank you for the recognition, Mr. Mayor and council members. I appreciate that.
Any exceptions for Mr. Dillon? Staying none, I do have one quick one. Seeing a lot of different things about the LNG project. Have you heard anything? You know, I've heard that they're gonna reverse the process and ship LNG in here and convert it.
There's nothing really that I can talk about right now, Mr. Mayor. I've been involved in some discussions about a variety of different things, but there's, there's no decisions on anything. And I would be wrong to open up my mouth and say anything.
Because I can remember 1976 talking about the gas line project, and what are we, close to fifty years down the road, and we're still talking about it. Okay, thank you. One last chance from the council.
Thank you all very much.
Thank, thank you for everything you've done for not only Sodatna, but I think the community and the Kenai Peninsula.
You're welcome.
Great job. We'll move on to item five on the agenda, Public Comments and Presentations. Items other than those appearing on the agenda, three minutes per speaker. Are there any members from the public who would like to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? Staying none, I'll take a look at Zoom. And I see no hands raised there. So moving on to the next agenda item is number six, Assembly and Legislative Report. Are there any representatives from the borough or the state in attendance who would like to speak? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. And I see Mr. Cox is here, and I'm sure he's got some interesting things to tell us.
Always. Tyson Cox, Borough Assembly, Sodatna Seat. I had been asked to, I believe it was the mayor's wishes, to hear a little bit about going forward with what's happening with the CES station and then also the Sodatna Elementary School. And so I thought I would bring in a little bit of information about that. There's not a ton. With the CES station, the project's currently in the design and development phase. There are some preliminary utility work that has been completed. The replating zoning change and conditional use permit is scheduled to be introduced to the Sodatna Planning and Zoning Meeting on December 6th. It's also the intent to release and intent to build for construction in February of 2024 with construction completion in the third quarter of 2025. And that's the information I was given because I did ask Mr. Hedges, and that's the information gave me on it. For the Sodatna Elementary, I think we've all heard a lot about of kind of where that's at at the moment, but we did have a third-party estimate that identified that the project is ceded allowable budget. So right now, there are talks going on between the borough and the school district. When there is a resolution of that, that would come back to the Assembly and the school district, and at that time, we'll know more. So that's pretty much what I've been given about the, and that's what we've been given in our meetings too, as far as the schools going. There are some issues with the, with where that funding is going, so they wanna step back, take another look at it, and then possibly come back with a different idea. I have other stuff, but if you want, if you have any questions on that, those two, please.
Yeah, let's, is there any questions? I mean, anything?
Pertaining to the CES station construction, has there been any additional discussion on what would happen to the current building once that's vacated and operations are moved over to the new station?
The last time I had asked, and actually I had asked Chief Browning before, and I'd asked Mr. Hedges. And both of those folks had said what, what the plan would be is at that time to, to look at sale at some point.
Okay.
But it would be down the road.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Assemblyman Cox, you said this is gonna be a design build going out to bid in February?
The, it just says ITB, so the intent to build, yeah, is gonna go out in February. So, yeah. Invitation to bid, sorry.
Oh, okay.
So the invitation to bid will be out in February, and then, so they're hoping that the construction then will be done by the third quarter in '25.
Good, good luck.
Well, and, and to be truthful, we haven't talked about it a whole bunch in our meetings because it's at this phase right now. So they're kind of. So they're kind of, I'm assuming they'll bring a little bit more to us as some of these things start falling into place. And if there's anything significant, I will definitely let you guys know if there's something that needs to be addressed.
Anything else on that? Go ahead.
Okay, so at, at our meeting last night, there was one item that I think is of importance to possibly Soldatna. I did end up asking the mayor if I could co-sponsor on it because I do feel it's pretty important. What it is, is a resolution to authorize memorandum of agreement between the borough and the incorporated cities within the borough to enable the joint exercise of tourism promotion and possible future joint promotion campaigns. What this is gonna do is with, when we had KPTMC, so the, the Kenai Peninsula Tourism Marketing Council, we were able to utilize funds within the entirety of the borough. And because there's a lot of rules talking about whether it's in the incorporated cities or whether it is in the unincorporated areas. And because there was funds coming from all different sources, including the cities that went into KPM, KPTMC, there was able to be joint advertising commitments at that point where everybody could advertise together. You're advertising the borough as a whole. So what, what is coming forward, and if nobody's seen it here, I actually have a copy of the, the agreement with me. If you guys want it, you can have it or you can just go online and look at it. But if you haven't looked at it yet, it's, it's pretty, it's a pretty simple contract or memorandum. And I think it's just something to start that ball rolling because I am a firm believer that we've been, we've been missing the ball on this for a few years since KPTMC has been gone. We need to get back to this idea of, of advertising as a whole. While they've been gone, the borough has been advertising some. But it's very difficult to advertise the Kenai Peninsula when you're saying, okay, come check out these little tiny areas. When really what people are coming to is they're coming to the large areas. Then we can talk to them about going out to these smaller areas and seeing what's available because we do have so many things available to folks. So why I signed on for that is not to say yes, Soldatna has to do that. What I signed on for is, is I think it's a very good conversation for not just Soldatna, but all of the cities to have with the borough so that we can do some of these advertising things and maybe work together to get people, more people coming to our great peninsula. So.
Any questions from the council? I guess I have a couple. On the subject you were just talking about. Is this something, this agreement been signed yet or something that's still being proposed?
From us, we did unanimously, it was a laydown yesterday. I, I signed on as a co-sponsor. It was unanimously agreed upon by the assembly to now bring it to you guys. So I, I'm assuming then there's gonna be a formal way to come and talk to you guys, all the cities about this agreement if they haven't already been in any kind of discussions. Because formally what we've done now is say, we agree that this should go to cities to look at.
And how are the chambers and visitor centers positioned on, or have they taken one?
I, I have not heard one yet. I would be glad to hear it. I would actually be even more glad to hear if they want to be involved. Because I think it's important for all those entities to be involved. I know they were with KPTMC, that was kind of a joint effort that they were also involved within that. So that'd be great if they all were.
Yeah, I think that's very important that they are involved because they're the heart and soul of what's going on in here right now. So then back to the schools again. On the, after you mentioned it, is I think there was some plans to convert the old middle school to administrative offices for the school district. What's the status or what's going on with that?
I, I think the entirety of most of that bond right now is in, in the state of what are we planning on doing? Because we still have the same amount of money. And I think that, that the idea is, is we're gonna decide how that's gonna roll. And then of course there is the legality of what the bond went out for because we have to stay within the constraints of what was asked by the citizens or what was asked to the citizens and then voted on. And so right now with that, the plan at the very moment is still administrative offices in that building at this moment. I know there's talks about that and maybe other ideas, but at the moment that's what's still on, on the books for that.
So it's kind of in limbo, right?
It is because I think what's gonna happen is, is once they decide what they're gonna do with the school, that will determine what they do with the rest of, of moving the offices and those kinds of things to be realistic.
And how, you know, if you know this, what portion of the bond issue that was passed was actually for that, that section?
For which?
For the middle school.
Eighteen point five, I'm not sure. You, do you know what it is, 20.5? Just tell me, 25. So there was, there was a good portion put towards the school. The school is the most of that bond. And then there was a, a large portion put towards the modifying the middle school. And so I, I think some of it is to say, what can, what can legally be reallocated if we can? And what can't? And then is, should we move forward or should we look at it again? I, I think there's a lot of questions and I know, I don't want to go too far on it because the mayor has not brought us a proposal. I know he's very concerned about it too and that they're looking into that. But they haven't brought anything back to us yet as the assembly.
Hey, that, that was 25 million, that's a pretty good sized chunk of that bond issue. So just thinking, okay. Anything else from the council, any question, anything else? Done?
I am, that, that, that was, that was the Soldatna stuff for our meeting, so.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate what you do. Moving on to the next agenda item. Public hearings, number seven, ordinance. Ordinance 2023-032, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $714,000 in the utility fund. And the Utility System Capital Improvement Fund for the wastewater treatment plant downfall rehabilitation project introduced by the city manager may have a motion to enact.
I'll move to enact 2023-032.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chilson. Report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor. This spring, we discovered the 21 inch downfall pipe hearing our treated effluent from the wastewater treatment plant to the Kenai River was in the process of failing. We brought the issue to council and appropriated funding necessary for inspection, analysis and design. The results of that work is in your packet today. The proposed design has a construction cost estimate of 714,000. That includes some contingency funds. This ordinance before you today would appropriate the funding necessary to advertise for construction. We would expect to begin the work at the most advantageous, advantageous time. That's both cost effective while prioritizing minimal impact to the environment. So low water conditions, things of that nature. So that concludes my report. I'll also add that utility manager Mike Allen is here if there's any specific questions. Thank you.
Are there any members of the public wishing, who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the raise your hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on, excuse me, ordinance 2023-032? Saying no, I'll take a look at Zoom. And I see no hands raised there. Having no one wishing to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? One quick, Vice Mayor Parker?
I just was curious and I was able to get the answer from our finance director is with this appropriation, would there still be, be monies in our utility fund? And with this appropriation and monies that we're anticipating, there would still be 2.3, about 2.3 million in the utility fund? Should other things pop up unexpectedly?
And anything else, the council? I do have one question. How soon do you think this could start? And how long would it take?
Thank you, Mayor. Currently, you know, typically we'll have a, about a three week bid process. We're targeting low water, like I mentioned. There's some data, historical data in regards to low water, also taking into account icing conditions which could impact construction. So right now, from a strategic standpoint, we're targeting between November and, and I want to say February. And so we will kind of fine tune that. I don't have an exact date yet, but that's what we're looking at as far as a construction timeline. And the other part of your question was?
Once it gets started, how long?
Oh, probably a two or three week project.
Two or three weeks?
Correct.
Thank you. Anything else in the council? If not, we'll call for vote.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
Ordinance 2023-032 passes on a 6-0 vote. Next item on the agenda is ordinance 2023-033, amending Soldatna Municipal Code Section 15.08.010 to clarify planning commission review of applicants for sign variances introduced by the city manager may have a motion to enact. Ms. Hutchings?
I make a motion to enact ordinance 2023-033, amending Soldatna Municipal Code Section 15.08.010 to clarify planning commission review of applications for sign variances presented by the city manager.
You have a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. A report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor. For this one, I would like to ask the Director of Economic Note and Planning, John Zorneski, to give the administrative report.
Thank you. So as was stated, this, this ordinance will clarify the planning commission's role in the review of sign variances. We've noticed in Title 15 that currently the variance procedures for signs are, are ambiguous. They benefit with some clarification. In one part of the title, it establish, establishes the city council as a board for review of certain types of appeals. And in the signed ordinance in Title 15, it identifies the planning commission. But in those circumstances, does it identify the appropriate process, which would include a hearing and notification, those types of things? So what this will do is this would put two things. One, it would formally give the planning commission the responsibility to review sign ordinance or sign variances as they have been doing since the, since they've been established. And then secondly, it'll require the same standards for variances that are in the zoning code for the sign code. So they will have to have a public hearing. It will have to be noticed and the public will find out about it. So that's the intent of this, clean that up. The planning commission reviewed it at the last meeting. They recommended it unanimously and we appreciate your support.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the raise your hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on ordinance 2023-033? Saying none, I'll take a look at Zoom. And I see no hands raised under Zoom. Having no one else wishing to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Saying none, we'll call for vote.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Parker? Cassidy?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2023-033 passes on a 6-0 vote. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is ordinance 2023-034, enacting Soldatna Municipal Code Chapter 3.16, lodging tax, amending section 3.08, 3.08.010, tax levied amount, amending section 3.08.030, borough collection of sales tax payment in full and amending section 1.05.080, minor offense line schedule introduced by Vice Mayor Parker. May have a motion to enact. Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I move to enact ordinance 2023-034.
May I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. Are there any, excuse me, report from the administration? And I guess that'll be, which one do you want to start?
I'll, I'll, I'll start. So briefly, ordinance 2023-034 would, if adopted, would put in a 4% lodging tax on lodging establishments within the city of Soldatna. The effective date of the ordinance would be January 1st, 2025, giving time for both the city, the borough and local businesses to put everything in places necessary. Lodging establishments would have to obtain a certificate of registration. And this would be something that the city would work with the lodging establishments with. Funds that are collected through this lodging tax would be used for tourism enhancement here within the city of Soldatna. The Kenai Peninsula Borough would collect the taxes, just like they currently do for sales tax, marijuana tax and property tax on behalf of the city of Soldatna. And taxes would be collected on a quarterly basis. So that is a, a brief overview on what's in this ordinance. There's a public hearing for tonight and then a second public hearing in December at our December meeting.
Would the administration like to add anything else to that? Okay, thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the raise your hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on ordinance 2023-034? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor Whitney, members of the council. My name is Joseph Kashi, spelled K-A-S-H-I. And I address as 205 East Beluga Avenue, Soldatna. I, sorry, I come to speak in favor of the ordinance. I think that all the factual support you need to enact this ordinance came from the wonderful reports of this other chamber, Mr. Dillon and the like, who of course noted revenue streams and the need to enhance. I think Soldatna is behind the times in not doing this. Most of the major cities or other destinations in Alaska do it. The ordinance, I looked at it carefully. The ordinance is well written and it's sensible. The city needs to go and enhance some of these things in order to provide for its overall economic enhancement. You know, we don't necessarily want to be a small, just a summer tourism dependent area. But we do want to bring in these factors to help bolster, show people the great places, to help bolster the, the reason for people to come, the encouragement for them to come. Some of those people are gonna come with excellent internet based jobs, insurance adjusters, design engineers and the like. They, you know, it's pretty clear in a 21st century economy, they come in part to places, in large part where they are location independent employment, they come because they want to live there. It's a good place for their kids. It's a good place for them. It's a good place for their family. You know, we've been discussing this, oh gosh, for many years. And I think it's really proven out and I, I've cited examples of this in the past. I won't waste time doing so again. We need however, to pay for it. As Mr. Dillon pointed out, we need a revenue stream. Four, a 4% bed tax is $5.20 a day on the average amount that Aspen Hotel mentioned last time we were here. That is not a deal breaker when you're spending thousands for airfare, car rentals, guides and everything else like that. It's not a deal breaker, but it definitely enhances the city's revenue stream to help pay for these things. These are excellent things. We do need to pay for them. They will be a significant part of Soldatna's wave of the future. I will mention very quickly, by the way, on the salmon sculpture for the park, we, we have requests out soliciting bids to cut the metal after the prototype and then also for the big one. So we are moving along in that in conjunction, by the way, with the Kenai River Sport Fish Association. That's helping design the educational panels that the city had suggested. I would thank you for all of that. I think the Kenai Peninsula Borough is a great place to be. And I note, by the way, when I did a compilation, this borough is bigger than Massachusetts, Rhode Island and Connecticut, Southern New England combined with an 11 million population versus a 60,000 population. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Kashi?
Save it for the bill.
See, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on ordinance 2023-034? Saying none, I'll take a look at Zoom. And I see no hands raised. And I see no hands raised there. So, um, having no one else wishing to speak on the item, the item is back before the council. Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Um, based on comments that were received from people about this ordinance, I, I have a couple of amendments I would like to propose. Uh, the first amendment would be, uh, changing section three point one-six point zero six oh distribution of funds and naming that Tourism Enhancement Fund, Use of the Fund. And I would move this amendment.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Chilton. Are there any council comments?
If I, if I, if I might, um, the, the concern that was expressed during the council meeting in October and to me during conversation was that, um, how can you guarantee that these monies are going to actually be used for tourism? So this would establish the Tourism Enhancement Fund, reaching out to the finance director, the auditors, everything. This is in accordance and is okay with, with our charter and our, and our code. Um, I've identified in here the found, the activities that it could be used for. The visitor center, uh, renovation and maintenance for the sports complex, the field house, Saldana Creek Park for parks, trails, sports fields located within the city limits. And it would only be for those things that are directly within the, the city limits. And then also as part of this amendment, it would be, um, currently the Parks and Rec Advisory Board oversees and provides input on these facilities. So before the city manager would bring a, a budget that would utilize these funds that the, that would go to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board for their review. Um, and, and their recommendation before bringing it to council. So that's the proposed amendment.
Any questions or comments from the council on that? Seeing none, uh, we'll call for the vote on the amendment, first amendment.
Whackler?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
Uh, the first amendment passes on a six-zero vote. Uh, we'll move on to, uh, next. Vice Mayor Parker?
Okay, again, the second amendment, uh, was brought forth from a recommendation from a person that would be subject to this lodging tax and, and requested further clarification on short-term rentals. And it would add the words, um, not to exceed thirty days and the new words are or one month, whichever is shorter. And this came up because as it was, it was thirty days and sometimes February is twenty-eight days, sometimes February is twenty-nine days. So this would further clarify that whichever is shorter, so that it's not creating conflict and confusion. So that's the purpose of, of this amendment and I would move this amendment.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Chilton. Council comments?
I, I provided mine.
I'm sorry?
I already provided mine. I apologize.
Seeing none, uh, call for the vote.
Question, Mr. Mayor, uh, since we have a second hearing on this schedule, do we need to motion postpone to the next meeting rather than vote on it or what's the process? Um, I believe we have a second public hearing on that scheduled. Um, so would the vote be occurring at the second meeting? Would we need to postpone it? I apologize, the motion to amend.
Exactly.
Okay. We'll call for vote again.
On the motion to amend, Chilton?
Yes.
Whackler? Hutchings?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
The second motion, uh, for amendment, uh, has passed on a six-zero vote. Vice Mayor Parker?
Uh, so amendment number three would amend, um, the part of the ordinance three point oh six oh seven oh eight two, uh, because we passed the first amendment, we need to add that back into government funds code. So that is the proposed amendment that I'm moving.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Council comments, Vice Mayor Parker?
Again, this is just because we made the first amendment to establish the Tourism Enhancement Fund. This is just correcting the code in that portion under government funds to reflect the tourism enhancement activities within that part of the code.
Any further comments from the council? Seeing none, we'll call for vote and that will be on the third amendment, uh, for three point one-six point zero seven zero eight-two.
Nelson?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
The third amendment, uh, to three point one-six point zero seven zero eight-two passed on a six-zero vote. Vice Mayor Parker?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Whitney. This is the, the last of the amendments at this time, um, tonight. This is, uh, amendment number four, would it, it's amending the title of the ordinance to reflect the changes that are, were in, put into, um, amendment number one. So it's just a clerical, it's correcting the title. And that's what I would move.
Can I get a second on that? Okay, uh, may I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Kind of losing track on this. Okay, we're on amendment number four. Uh, any council comments? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
The fourth amendment to, uh, the title, uh, passed on a six-zero vote. Are there any further amendments? Vice Mayor Parker?
Um, if there's no additional people wishing to testify, I would move to postpone ordinance twenty twenty-three zero three-four as amended until the December thirteenth council meeting.
May I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Chilton? Uh, are there any additional con, uh, council comments on the motion to postpone? Seeing none, um, we'll call for the vote.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
The motion to postpone ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero three-four has passed on a six-zero vote. Uh, and there will be a second public hearing on this at the December thirteenth council meeting. So it will be open for more public comment at that time. Moving on to the next agenda item. Mayor and council reports. Uh, mayor's report and proclamations, uh, I'm going to go through the comments here first. Uh, city hall will be closed on Friday, November the tenth in observance of Veterans Day and November twenty-third and twenty-fourth in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. Mayor and council members, city manager and the city clerk will be attending the Alaska Municipal League and Affiliates Annual Conference in Anchorage during the first week in December. And the city is currently recruiting to fill vacancies on various boards and commissions and the filing down, deadline is December first, twenty twenty-three. Uh, for more information, visit the city's website at soldana.org or council, or contact the city clerk's office. Uh, my comments, um, we attended, or I attended and I think most of the council did also the, um, employee appreciation dinner, uh, last Monday was very, very good turnout, uh, very good event. Um, appreciate, um, everyone that was there, all the council members that were there. And, um, I look forward to doing this again next year. It's, um, a great opportunity to say thank you to all of our great city employees. Um, I laid a, um, copy of an email down on each of your spots, uh, about the Lee Shore Annual Banquet and, um, um, Board of Directors Meeting. I will be out of the country at that time and if any of you would like to attend that, um, please notify the Lee Shore and the person who sent the email, I believe her name was Haley, um, uh, if you would like to attend. And I need, that needs to be done probably tomorrow because the deadline was today. Okay, um, I would ask the city clerk if she could obtain a copy of this, um, memorandum, memorandum of agreement that Mr. Cox was talking about and email it out to all of the council members and the city administration. So we are all aware of that, um, what's going on. It looked like it was like about a three-page document, so it might be interesting reading. And, uh, as I said earlier, I will be gone starting on November fifteenth until be back in town in December the first. And then, of course, we leave December the fourth for the AML conference. Um, I wish everybody, uh, very happy and, uh, pleasant, uh, Thanksgiving. Don't eat too much turkey, um, and Veterans Day is coming up. Uh, there's a few events happening. Uh, there's going to be one at the, um, American Legion Post in Kenai, um, at eleven AM on November the eleventh. So if anybody has the time and wants to attend. I haven't heard of any, uh, other events, um, at this point in time. And, um, so moving on to the next agenda item. Council reports on boards and commissions, Saldana Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, Mr. Carey.
I have nothing to report. I wasn't there.
That was the one meeting I wasn't planning on attending and ended up not. So we'll move on to Saldana Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting, Mr. Chilton.
I was out of the country with an excused absence.
Mr. Zarneski, maybe you could report on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I was going to ask because of the plat that was at the October meeting.
Um, I will do my best. I'm trying to remember, we had, um, the, uh, the ordinance that you just, uh, approved regarding the signs, uh, on there. The, thank you, the Jim Telker, um, application for a Kenai River overlay district conditional use permit. Um, that was to construct a house, um, approximately eighty-five feet from the ordinary high watermark. That was approved by the, uh, commission with a few conditions to ensure that any type of environmental damage or any kind of damage to the riparian habitat doesn't occur. And then there were a number of plats. Um, there was a easement vacation for, uh, Whistle Hill. Um, and, uh, that was approved. There was, um, the, um, drawing a blank, Diane Lane. Um, there was a proposal at a previous meeting to, uh, construct, um, from Diane all the way up to Night Drive, uh, approximately ten acres and, uh, include a road that would go through. The, uh, public, um, was not, uh, that attended that meeting was not in support of that and the council rejected, um, or recommended disapproval of that plat. And the surveyor and the developer went back to the table and redesigned that subdivision so that it ends in a cul-de-sac. And that was then approved or recommended for approval by the, the planning commission. And there was one other, uh, plat that they looked at. It was a lot combination, uh, along the Kenai River, three lots into two, and that also was recommended for approval.
Thank you. Mr. Colonel Ellis, do you have anything on the Parks and Rec? That you could do?
Uh, I do not. I was, uh, I briefly walked through the beginning of the Parks and Rec, uh, meeting and Joel had laid out, uh, some of our, um, flooring samples from the field house. So, uh, I do know that he was apprising the commission of, uh, some of the samples for the field house, but I, I, I did not attend that meeting. Yep.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the next agenda item. That's city manager's report.
Uh, I'll be very brief. Uh, the city manager report in the packet, um, uh, identifies a couple of upcoming work sessions, uh, that we'll be holding. Um, also identifies a contract extension with our state lobbyists, uh, as well as some information from the Alaska Retirement Board that, um, this, the administration has communicated to, uh, applicable employees. Um, uh, the only thing I'll add to is that, uh, parts of town will be getting a shave and haircut here with some spruce bark beetle tree felling, um, one with the, uh, field house contractor who intends to do some, um, early clearing, um, here in the next week or two, next, uh, next to the parking lot at, uh, the Saldana Regional Sports Complex. And then also we have, uh, on the street right now with an upcoming bid date, um, hazardous tree, hazardous fuels and tree, um, hazardous fuel reduction and tree removal project, uh, the state grant that, uh, Director Zarneski was, uh, able to, uh, acquire and that will, uh, take place over the next several months. But we'll be, um, dropping some hazardous trees in four distinct areas of the city. That concludes my report.
I heard you say something, shave and a haircut.
Shave and haircut.
Um, you were looking at me when you said that. Okay. Uh, any questions for the city manager? Thank you. We'll move on to the next agenda item, uh, number eleven, public comments. Members of the public will have three minutes to comment. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? Uh, for those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the raise your hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Anyone here in the audience wishing to make any public comments? Seeing none, I'll take a look at Zoom and I see no hands raised there. Uh, next item is council comments, um. We'll start tonight with Mr. Chilton.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend the employee appreciation dinner this year, but based on my experiences with events in the past, I'm, I'm, um, sure it was great and that's kind of what I'm hearing as well. So, um, just wanted to put out there that, uh, we have an incredible team at the city of Saldana and all of the employees here are deeply appreciated and I look forward to hopefully attending in person next year.
Mr. Nelson?
No comments tonight, thank you.
Ms. Hutchings?
No comments.
Mr. Cassidy?
I do have some comments. So our report shouldn't be too long. I just wanted to mention, uh, our swim team went to state last weekend, uh, performed pretty well. Gabriella Warner particularly performed exceptionally well. She won the diving competition and achieved the third highest record, uh, in the state for, at least for our division. Uh, so that was, that was really cool. Good for her. It was a good way to end her senior year of swimming. Um, the, like I said, the team overall did pretty well. Um, the, their point system isn't optimized for our team specifically. Um, but I know that they're, they're working really hard to, uh, to, well, to remedy their loss and, uh, to continue performing well in the future. I talked to a few of them today and they told me that because they are not one of the teams who yet, um, knows for a fact that they're going to state, they generally peak their training for regions and then if you make it to state, it's like a cherry on top of the season. So, yeah, good job to, uh, to Gabriella and, um, that is pretty much it. Uh, the student council is currently working on a food drive. Uh, it's a class competition. Um, the seniors are winning. I don't think, I don't think the other classes are anywhere near where the, where the senior class is. So, yeah, but I'm, I'm excited to see, um, all of the, the donations that are going to those families in need. That concludes my report.
Didn't the wrestlers win something in competition also?
Uh, something like that. The wrestler results are kind of, uh, they're interesting. I know that you're right. We have had a bunch of, uh, individual winners in the last few, um, just, uh, oddball tournaments. In fact, there was a tournament yesterday in Nikiski, my younger brother, he wrestles, and he called it a surprise meet because he didn't know about it until the day of. And so the, yeah, the, um, the results of that are, are interesting again because of the point system. Um, but you're right, we have had some, some good wrestlers and I know that we have, uh, I think we have at least four who are really looking forward to, um, to getting a state title this year. I think we have at least four who are really looking forward to to getting a state title this year.
Ms. Whackler?
Thank you, Mayor. It was a really busy couple of weeks for me. Halloween was great, the kids absolutely loved it. It was one of the warmest Halloweens I remember. I don't remember walking around where everybody's taking off all their gloves and hats. And it was just strange all around, but we have the snow now, which I'm also excited about. I also had the pleasure of attending the employee appreciation dinner and I love seeing that we have some major longevity longevity in our employment here. Seeing a place where someone can work at, or what was the record on the last one? Forty-five years?
Forty-six.
Going on his 46th year, that's amazing. So I really enjoyed getting to see some of the employees of the city, meeting some more of the the cops. And then I also had the pleasure of attending on behalf of the city of Soldatna, the Boys and Girls Club fundraiser, which was this last weekend. That one is really close to my heart. I think a lot of us know that one of the major barriers to entry for a lot of parents is childcare. And Boys and Girls Club is one of those entities that supports so many parents to be able to do that. And I want to thank all of the community members and businesses that donated their services and products to be able to raise funds for that. It's a really important one. And there are also a number of, there's too many to list, fundraisers and things that are going on around town. We did just finish up the Jekyll and Hyde production with Kenai Performers, which was an awesome production. And then there was a little one that not a lot of people paid attention to, but it was sold out, the Rocky Horror Picture Show, which is a, an interesting theatrical combination. They raised money and donated it to the Lee Shore Center, the Peninsula Period Network. And one other, I think it was Soldatna Pride was their third one, they raised enough money to give $300 to each one of those organizations. So there's a lot of events going on right now. I encourage you all to find all of them and thank you for for giving me the chance to attend them all. Thank you.
Just to add to your Halloween comments, I had more trick-or-treaters this year than I've had in the 34 previous years that I've lived here. I ended up, I started out with two big bags and ended up having to go buy three more. It was, it was solid kids from four o'clock to about 8:30 at night.
It definitely felt like I started early and I, you have kind of the older kids bringing in the tail. I still had people ringing my bell past 9:30. But we didn't run out of candy, but we did have about 30 people at my house starving. So people brought candy to add to the pot. So it wasn't all mine, but yeah, when you live in town, that is one thing that we briefly talked about, the possibility of certain roads and areas being well-traveled in Soldatna that night. And if there might be next year locations that we could have a police presence for safety at, if that seems. But you know, the last two years have been really light, so we didn't really have that need. And I'm glad to see everybody out and and doing it again this year.
Yeah, I believe the Elks said they had like 350 kids show up at their trunk and treat, huge success there also. Mr. Carey?
Happy Thanksgiving to all.
Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank, thank you, Mayor Whitney, I want to say happy Veterans Day to the veterans out there and thank those who have served. I'm fortunate that many members of my family are part of that, part of that group. Everybody have a great Thanksgiving and when you're out there on the streets, please be safe.
Thank you. Next agenda item is number 13, executive session, discussion with the city attorney on property tax exempt and amicus brief AS 44.62.310 slash C, or C3. In accordance with Alaska statute 44.6231.3103C3, attorney-client communications are matters which by law municipal charter or ordinance are required to be confidential, therefore may be held in executive session. May I have a motion to enter into executive session? Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney, I move to enter into an executive session to discuss the property tax exemption amicus brief with the city attorney. The executive session will include the mayor, city council members, acting city manager, Cornelius, city attorney Charles, and whatever.
We know.
And city clerk Blankenship.
May I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. Are there any objections to convening into executive session? Once the council returns from executive session, the Zoom meeting will be resumed. And we will move into executive session in the downstairs conference room. Okay, we're back on, may I have a motion to come out of executive session?
I'll second.
Vice Mayor Parker, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Chilson, are there any objections to convening into regular session? Seeing none, we are back into regular session by unanimous consent. Meeting announcements, December 6th, 2023, Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting, 5:30 PM. December 13th, 2023, City Council Meeting at 6:00 PM. And then and seeing nothing else on our agenda, we are adjourned.